Everybody listen up, please. I'd like to welcome everybody this afternoon to the Swan County Board of County Commissioners' Special Call Meeting, Saturday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty, one P M. This time, we're kind of open to a roundtable discussion here a little bit about the serious water issues and flooding that we have going on. I think we'll start with the Commissioners first and just kind of get some input, then we'll bring everyone else in as we go. What I'd like to do to start with, though, is uh, before we do that, let's make mention everybody that's here. We got Mr. Harris, County Administrator, we got Mr. Vabat.
Adam McCook.
Keith Davis.
Forrest Davidson.
Lee Taylor.
Sharon Heaton.
Eric Musgrove.
Rodney Richardson.
Don Hale.
Glenn Stapleton.
Ricky Gamm.
I've been.
Sam St. John.
Eddie Hand.
Thank you.
Jason Furrow, Preparation Department.
And Mr. Furrow is here. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, we'll start with Mr. Harris.
Yeah, we've, uh, I'm sure all of you guys have had it, but I've gotten some major flooding, washouts, sinkholes. I think they just continue to cause problems as we get more and more rain. And Mr. Harris, you probably can tell, talk more to us to what the road crews are doing. I know we're out of barricades. Combs probably as well.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, do you want me to try to give you an update on where our resources are, what's going on?
Let's do that, and I want to know what we need to go after.
Let me just go ahead and jump the punchline first. I called Senator Bradley, he's called the State D O C Director, I spoke to Sharon, she talked to some regional directors. Bottom line is, the typical approach that we would take is, on a hurricane, something that's affecting a large percentage of the state, the governor would declare a state of emergency, and then local governments would follow up with their own if they were affected. The purpose of that for us, what it really means to us, is that we can then seek reimbursement for expenses if we meet the dollar thresholds, the minimum requirements. But the state has to as well, as a state. In this particular case, I don't know that the governor's going to declare anything, even on a local level. But more importantly, it wouldn't affect the money side of the equation because the state isn't going to have millions of dollars worth of damages associated with this. This is really Swan County and maybe a couple other pieces of some other counties. That was the first big issue that we were trying to address, because we're going to have substantial expenses with putting roads back in that are just washed away now. A lot of sinkholes, we've been repairing sinkholes. We've been repairing what we can repair, but unfortunately, like Tropical Storm Debbie, the areas that have the most flooding right now, we can't do much of anything with. We're just going to have to wait until the water goes down. All we can do is block the roads, put barricades out, put signs up, uh, road underwater. But I want all of you to understand, and I've spoken to some of y'all already today, we have a serious problem, and it is a typical problem, with people coming in behind us, taking our barricades and signs, and driving off with them. I don't know if they're believing that they need to be closer to their house, or their property, or in their neighborhood, or if they're just stealing them. But they vanish, I mean, sometimes within an hour of the time that we put them out. We've had people call and screaming at us, want barricades on roads, and we tell them, "We were just there, forty-five minutes ago." Put four of them up on each side of that road, and they're all gone. So, I want you to be aware that we have put out every barricade that we own. We, I called D O T last week, and we borrowed, I think we got another ninety-five signs, barricades from them. Those are all out. I called early this morning and spoke to D O T again. They checked and called me back and said they can't loan us any more barricades because they're afraid they're going to need them. They've got a lot of, uh, their roads that are underwater as well. So, that's where we are on barricades. Now, we borrowed a few from Acme over here in the industrial park, and we're thankful for that. I do have concerns. If they get stolen, we're going to be buying some signs and barricades that we don't have. But we did go ahead and, uh, we bought some of the metal posts, fence posts. We put in on each side of these roads that we know are going to be closed for a long time. And the orange, uh, netting that you put up like on a construction site. And we're putting that up as well, so we've got that. We're putting out, like I said, on the roads that we know are going to be underwater for an extended period of time. So, I've spoken to the issue of the state. I had called, uh, County Attorney earlier about, uh, local state of emergency. That really doesn't help us accomplish anything. The reality is, if we have to rescue someone, um, if we have to go on private property, we can do that regardless. So, the question of a local state of emergency benefiting us at this point is kind of mute. There's not a whole lot of benefit there.
Let me, let me answer this, uh, because I did speak to Senator Bradley just before we come in, and I spoke to Chip Brandon, and he was asking me, Mr. Sharon, have you spoken to any other E O Cs that they experienced anything like this? Because the more of those that report issues, the better chance we have.
I have not. I've spoken with my county coordinator, and he didn't make mention of any other E O Cs having issues, but I can reach out.
Would you mind?
I'd go, excuse me, I'd call the Ball County because they're expected to do the same thing, et cetera.
I, I do think that there's enough counties that have a problem, that they should do something.
Well, I don't disagree with, I, I'd love for them to do something, I think they should. But if it doesn't reach that dollar threshold, what was that number? Did he take that number?
I believe it was two points something million for the state, and then locally, we have to reach, I think it was around eighty-eight thousand. Every county has to reach their threshold, which is around two dollars and ten cent per capita.
I got a bunch of damage, so. Seriously? Yeah, if you could do that, I think that would just help our case. Because I know there's folks like Mr. Townsend and others around here, you gotta see if the city needs help. I mean, the whole county's not just out in the woods, it's in town and everywhere else.
I think that we could hit the threshold locally. I don't know if the state is going to agree that they think they can hit it, if they'll do what we would need for them to do in order for us to do our local state of emergency.
They shut down state highways, they shut down interstates during this time.
Yeah, but it has to be damages. The issue here is damages, and a dollar threshold on damages, shutting the thing down, and them blocking a road off and detouring traffic. It does cost them a lot of money to do that. If they have a bridge washout, a huge interstate section get washed away or something, that, that would have significant expense. But absent that, just barricading road, having one underwater, it's going to, it's going to rack up a lot of expense.
Well, I mean, I think at this time, we'd all the same things, that we would like some assistance from them, if at all possible, that we could hit it. Right now, there's different numbers out there, but I mean, right here in town, I've had two different reports, right around twenty-two inches, I think. We've been seventeen, the first time, seventeen and a half. Two, three, four, this last go around, so I mean, but then, six days, five nights, six days, we got, I don't know, twenty-two, twenty-three inches of rain. I mean, more expected, there's just not a whole lot that, uh, we can do here, but try to get some help, find it, if at all possible, because we got people hurt, we got roads. We got a bunch of expense out there, I mean, I had to give Mr. Harris yesterday, we had to close a, a road that crossroads are in. It's going on a big number to fix it. It is, it's, it's closed now, we can't even use it, it's a heavily traveled, uh, dirt, or limo road, but anyway, it's out of commission now. And I would say, venture to say it will be for a month.
It could be longer than that. We're just getting into the wet season, the hurricane season. What concerns me is we've got a very high confining layer of clay in a lot of the areas of the county. So, uh, the particular road that the Chairman is speaking of, I was there, and I promise you, we had a river sixty feet wide and probably five foot deep running through.
Through the crossdrain, the culvert.
Huge crawl drains there that we've got problems with. So, that, that's affecting a whole area there in the north part of the county.
What does the, uh, what does the mine look like? Have you had any reports on water?
Mine takes a little bit longer for it to affect. I had concerns that I expressed about three weeks ago with some of the men there, because it will come up, flood everything. So, we're trying to make sure our equipment's out of the way and up on high areas. Typically, that river will go up first. When the river starts going down is when it comes up in the mine, so.
One big question, the river, have you gotten with, uh, or anybody gotten with water management to see if, uh, the river is going to rise from the Okinoki? Or is this, this primarily local?
It's probably in my email, honestly. There's probably something in your email.
That's why I have sent you water management emails myself, so.
I'd say it's not everywhere.
I was saying, I think the last thing I read was today or tomorrow, it's because it was before the rain, that Swan Springs.
Yeah, they got, yeah. Swan Springs is the first one affected, it's, now, this, this was before last night, they said, you know, expecting, you know, mine are flooding, you know, but then this was the last, uh, mine from what we had last night. But they say every inch of rain in Okinoki, that is a foot in the river here, so. I, I, well, the other thing we're going to have to look at is, more than that, we're pretty close. This and the Santa thing, uh, so we're going to have to keep.
So, we're going to expect more flood, but.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, I, we're going to keep tomorrow pretty close, but, but we, yeah, if you had, I know, I'm like Randy Green, I got some emails, I don't know if I've looked at all of them, but any, any more predictions on them, Sharon, do you remember any?
The last email that I received Friday, I believe, was, they had called off deep flooding.
Okay. That's right. Okay.
Well, I, I think the systemic problem is going to affect us throughout the next few months, honestly, is what I'm more concerned with now. We've got immediate tragic problems. But because we're so wet now, and we've got this high confining layer, if it continues to rain a couple of times a week over the next two months or three months, I'm afraid these problems will be much larger.
We're going to tropical storm up there here. I do have an issue, just real quick, uh, that I wanted to address, and I'll be done with it. I called Eric Oren and asked him to look into it, uh, next week, of course, we'll see when he gets to it, but, uh, before it becomes a problem, if you remember Little River, uh, when it came across two hundred last time, it washed about ten foot gorge out, ten foot deep, about ten foot wide. It is flowing extremely heavily, about a hundred yards away from it, dropping into a sinkhole. Uh, or it's got a cavern down there, drops into and goes back on the ground. And when that cavern gets full, takes too much, it, it, that's when it washes out, and it starts flowing to the ground. So, uh, the problem is, is the culverts are clogging up again, so, and I just asked him to go out there and look at it, and maybe look at it, see if he can. I don't even know how to handle one of those properties right here, so, I'm just afraid it's going to happen again. And when it does that, two hundred, it's closed off. Last time it happened, two sixteen, got washed out at the same time. It may be a quick fix, and it may not be.
I have a question. I, I know that flooding is hitting in a lot of the farms. And I, I, we got several farmers in the room, and I know, uh, Lee Townsend is, uh, I know it's affecting probably a lot of your farms. But how is this carezak, how would that come into?
Carezak has nothing to do with this, so.
It doesn't?
No, not at all.
Yes, I would prefer that.
But, okay, with the farmers, what are, what are, what are y'all doing as pertaining to the farm, what to the farmers, y'all, the flooding that's going on?
More so that it affects you, that.
Well, we got fields that run the water, so it's destroying crops. From once all that's gone, we still going to have thousands and thousands of dollars to repair. Fixing those fields back, covering up those washes. Just like the game, you can't replant crops, like you're out of revenue. Sitting there, waiting on a bunch of repairs, you got to spend money on.
Wait until that dry out before you need to start repairs.
But you're, but you're saying the local state of emergency, that, that doesn't contribute as far as money wise? The governor, the governor has to do, has to declare whatever counties is affected along with us. But that sound like, that sound like our best option would be, just like you were saying, is to have Sharon get with the different E O Cs and different, uh, different counties, and just see what their effect is, and see if there's enough counties for them, you know, for the compact governor, and say, hey, this is what's happening in extra number counties, and we need help.
If there's enough damage, and the counties meet that statewide threshold, and the governor goes ahead and declares a state of emergency for those counties. And then our threshold, our threshold won't be a problem meeting, we can do that. But if that occurs, then FEMA will reimburse our events to reconstruct roads, for the most part, and whatever materials it takes to get that done.
But just, now, just like, uh, Lee, uh, his, uh, field and all, with that, if that was, that also would have helped him out too, with his?
That I don't know, I really don't know about that.
FEMA would help him on that?
Potentially, potentially, but probably not. I mean, you have to have enough out in the community, enough homes, enough businesses in that. So, if there's been enough businesses, then it's like, it's usually renting a big community businesses, and then up with five or more homes, not renting.
You know, we could, I mean, what's the word, I know that, that this is, you know, we could have maybe some reimbursement, I'm sure we could, oh, one of the ones would come forward and say, hey, I had this type of damage, so. That's, I'd like our best.
Oh, exactly, I can see you're talking to homes right now.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it, it sounded like we would have, enough to tell, it sounded like our best option would be to try to go that route there, to, to get reimbursed, because
But once you've got that declaration.
Right.
Madison, can I include?
Need to have it.
I know that they are.
Hamilton, I've already reached out to Hamilton, they said around thirty thousand, but that doesn't include last night.
Mr. Provac.
Mr. Provac.
Ms. Heaton, don't, don't we have to have the L S E declared beforehand?
I would advise, possibly, go ahead and sign the L S E, I mean, it doesn't have to be today, you could do it on Tuesday. But what that will open up is, if Mr. Harris had some emergency items that he needed to go ahead and purchase, so he wouldn't have to come back and ask, he would be allowed to go ahead and do what he needed to do. Same with Eddie or any other department. And then that also shows that we do have an emergency. But as far as doing a lot, no.
Yeah, it doesn't have the same overall effect as when the governor has declared an emergency for this event. But it does give me some flexibility. And then, then we can just wait and see what the governor's going to do, and we're trying to get word with the governor, trying to get the governor to do something.
Do we need a letter to the governor, from the board?
We, we can send a letter, I'm going to be real frank with you. The, the letters that we have sent to the governor before, um, we've never heard anything back about, so I'm not sure that that's the best approach, and, and maybe it's because the governor's been so busy doing other things like COVID or something, I don't know, but, the reason I contacted Senator Bradley was, and I specifically asked him to try to contact the governor's office, and he was working on that, so.
Yeah, he assured that he was going to get in touch with him. Mr. Brandon actually has reached out to Stephanie, I don't know, I can't pronounce her last name, had to go to the, he sent me her number too, so I'm going to reach out to her as well.
Well, I'd like to document it, though, let's, let's do a letter, a lot of it will be documented, I mean, it's, it's, you know, a request is a request, and we can have all the phone calls we want, but I'd still have the people in this county, I'd like for our group, I mean, there's.
That's the same letter as, but with the coffee, Senator Ryan.
Yeah, I mean, exactly, and we've talked all over.
Oh, I know, but just so that they get.
Yeah, just so they are.
They are, we may have to find a government.
Before we go any further, I would like to recognize the City Manager, Mr. Williams, is joining us, he come in, and Mr., and the Mayor, Mr. Davis, welcome, gentlemen. Thank y'all for being here, it's, uh, it's tough times right now.
Chief, of course, and it's chairman of the representing, but, uh, who's any kind of civic at the time?
I have barricades.
That's one thing we don't have left, I mean, right now, we're good, but another inch of rain, and we got to put them all back out.
We got some.
You got all the dust.
Uh, how many, do y'all have a count of how many businesses in town were affected in the last week or so, or even last night? How much all up downtown, like?
All up in downtown, yeah, last night wasn't as bad as Sunday, but it was pretty close, yeah.
We did counsel very close last night.
Yeah.
That was deep last night.
I, I don't like Commissioner Stapleton, I, I've got roads that have four foot wide, four foot deep valleys, and, I mean, they're just, you can't, I've got a house that we have a hundred, and that, our road is, and her house. Washed down.
I just, I really want to try to do everything we can to get some funding, and to get the governor to, to help with some of this. It's going to be into the hundreds of thousands of dollars just on minor road repairs. And I'm not talking about, we have asphalt roads, I'm not talking about limo roads that have crossdrains, and just repair them at the time that they're closed, so.
Yeah, I don't know if we got the manpower to get them back, whether you need to be before the next one is.
Well, there you go, again, as we start running all this twenty-four seven, comes into effect at some point, we're running these man hours, and no different than the Sheriff's Department, Police Department, I mean, all this is affected, so, we're going to do what we can on our end to, to reach out. Obviously, everybody's talking, and they already have made some calls, and got some things moving, and people have been receptive. So, I feel like we're moving in the right direction. I would like to say, I'm just, I'm grateful for everyone to be here today, it's a, it's a serious situation we're dealing with, we're all here on behalf of the people of the county, but, it, uh, it just makes me feel good when I look around, and I, I have a full group of people here, I mean, we got all five Commissioners here, that says a lot, when you got a two-hour notice on a meet on Saturday, that means a lot to me. We got all the representatives from the city, that means a lot to me. We got businesses, farm owners here, I mean, uh, when you can get a group of people together that quick, fire rescue, not going to leave y'all out. It just, it says a lot about, about the leadership that we have throughout the city and the county, but I'm grateful for that. And I didn't mean to tell anybody else, I was talking to everybody, but I just wanted to get that out there.
Um, Hamilton adjusted their numbers, it's almost sixty thousand. And I'm reaching out to do balling.
What were you saying about the bridge, about one fifty-one?
Asking somebody to bridge on Heinz Highway, prepare it. Got a, I'm deemed safe by the state this week. What bridge is that? They were on Heinz Highway there on fifty-one, Cook Sandman. The state deemed it unsafe for it.
I thought you meant fifty-one, I was going to throw the state's. Big speed zone.
He touched base with him, I know he's had a lot of flooding issues and stuff down, the mayor that's been dealing with all this, they're kind of overnight.
What are we doing, far as ninety, I mean, can we get any help from D O T over there on that, where the water's in the river, so far as ninety? They had a pump in one section there, but that section farther out.
Yeah, the one that was, it wasn't, it was out of last night, it, just before you get to one fifty-third, it's, it was bad, in fact, when I got there, there was three cars that already flooded out, and we had, luckily, there was a wrecker come by, and we got him pulled out of the road. But it's, 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 it's just impassable, and then when, when the D O T got there, um, we explained to them, you know, how, how deep it was, and which now, they, they put the, uh, signs, they put the, the road underwater signs, but then they had the big message boards out there, each, at each side, and that people see it, because I think they're not, people are not paying attention to these smaller signs, and they're just, they're hitting it, and then it's too late. But with the message boards up there, I think that, that helped a lot. But, and I was talking to my, you know, I said, we may have to close it and all, but then he was kind of him humping around about, which then we could close it on the, on the west side, because they could turn around at one fifty-third, but we'd have to come back, further back on the east side to close it. But they just opted with the message boards, um, which helped a lot, you know. But it, it was, it was very deep last night, because that's a small, compact car, couldn't make it do it, no matter how slowly it went, it, it just would flood out.
But the, not only the rupture, but they're pumping that water right here, and it's going down like west ninety. But it, what I think they don't realize happened, it's going across those tracks under and over them, and it's flooding everyone on the backside of that road, it's a river. And you just watch, it's coming across our road, where they're pumping. I mean, they're getting it off their road, they're putting it on our road.
Yeah, yeah, that's running right across the little, I call it a little mortars trail part there.
There.
That, that those part there, yeah.
A little color down too.
Yeah. Yeah, there's about, there's about three spots on ninety west, that's, that's, that's pretty, pretty bad at when it gets raining like it was last night.
Randy, I was going to ask Mr. Little, I asked you this too, uh, talking about the tracks and all that, I know we got a new owner of those tracks. Could we reach out to them, because I was looking at some of their rightaways, they haven't been maintained in a while.
Yeah, I can get to them. In fact, I'll just say that they've been great to work with on everything else that I've been working with them on. One thing that we may run into there, they're, they can go in there and do some maintenance on those, get rid of some of that vegetation. There's a lot of infrastructure running through that rightway, though, that, that will prohibit them in some cases from digging swales through there like might otherwise. Help with getting, getting rid of water.
I actually had a conversation with them about two weeks ago, and people that are easier to work with, and what CSX was, on each of those up there, or whatever they, or not. From what I gathered from that conversation I had, they're short iron, and they don't, they just don't have the revenue coming in, CSX had to do it, if they were going to do this, so. So, coming from the county and not from one Commissioner, may be a different story. But I had a pretty big conversation with them, and actually, they're going to have a location out in Old Ninety, for things that, that's fine. Could you look, as you can see, there's, where they've built it up over time, there would probably hold water between the tracks and back. Yeah. There's some places where that's washed out. A lot of those places are put up a willows now. Yeah, we stopped looking at them, and they turned into little swamps and bottoms, and that's a bit, which then over time fills in on its own. Conversation wasn't heard, but. Maneuver mess, if you're, if you're judging yours.
I'll talk to them. The safety line they like for the road, as bad as it can get, keep walking across. I mean, because it's, my whole lock, the city lock, I mean, it's just pressing, like that, they're out of it, and there's nothing anybody can do about it, and that's what's frustrating, you know, you can't even, they don't notice you on them.
Yeah, they don't maintain for a while.
I mean, that's, uh, just frustrating, yeah. Anyway, anything else on the city side that we can help with?
Actually, I don't, like, so right now, uh, major roads in the city are back open. You know, the, the retention ponds is the biggest help that we've got, you know, which y'all have in the county road, that is the retention ponds there. You know, right now, our, our major road group, we split up some side streets, closed off, and it's too deep to be passable, but, uh, we're all up for that deal. And you had some houses, I think, still in the north end, it's flooded, and I think your place is pretty close out there on Second Street, if it's not.
Y'all know any, any other areas that may be underwater for housing or anything?
I don't, Chief, I was in North, just a minute ago, and I was over the east side, and, uh, it's received it pretty good, if not daily, if you notice, but, uh, and then we had the pumpers out, so we're, you know, we're getting that. Mr. Mayor, what about, uh, that, that area behind you, between the park, the water going down there?
Yes, uh, Jason, they're pumping over there in the gallon. The property. That looks pretty good.
So, you know, we have a holdoff, a bit, a few hours, and for a couple of minutes, we should be, we should be okay. That's why I gave, if there's any of our equipment, then I'll talk to you, Sheriff, but if there's any of our stuff that, uh, may be utilized, certainly, we can, we can support. Appreciate that. I appreciate all the enforcement from the city and the county side, everybody's working together to the best of our ability. They are, Mr. Chairman. Resources. I, I, sorry, Sheriff, I'm going to run it, I appreciate that.
Ricky, I'm not sure if, that you were gone, that's the Commissioner for one hundred thirty-five. Ricky, I'm not sure if, that you were gone, that's the commissioner for one hundred thirty-third place, Ron Peters Department. I just got a, um, text from one of the people that live there. And she's got a sinkhole that has started right outside of her kitchen window. They also said that the sewer system has completely shut down. And she also said that the third dig place down, the whole back wall was cracked, was shifting.
That's rather about any way, but we've got, um, cut through the front of Oxford.
The address is, um, nine two twenty-six, under thirty-third place.
Yeah, that's.
It's, it's at the end of.
That's Lakewood.
Okay. It's, it's not Lakewood, it's the next one. Um, on the backside.
On down, go on down, turn by Blaylock's house where it leads, back around the back.
Yeah, it's around the back.
That just came through and that's what's going on, but that hole, the third dig place, the whole back wall is cracked and shifting. And then the first dig place, just a sinkhole started underneath, going underneath the tunnel. And the whole sewer system is shutting.
You need to go fix that.
Isn't that why they call you, is you run in there fixing it?
It's worn out, handle broke.
Or I'm broken, but yes, no, I'd like to, I'll go check on it.
Oh, let me.
Yes, go check on it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Columbia has had very little. They're fine. Madison's very little, they're fine. I've reached out to Duvall, they've got a lot going on right now with protests. And some testing sites that are open, but they will be giving back to me. Um, and I, I want to be realistic. It doesn't look like we will probably need, um, to play it statewide. Probably end up having to deal with this on our own. Doesn't hurt to still reach out and do everything we can. Um, my region coordinator did mention mutual aid agreements, if we have needs, you know, for additional equipment, pumps, things like that. Um, you can work with us to get that, but you understand that if you sign a mutual aid agreement, you're responsible for that.
Commissioners, I, I need to say something now. I do not advise trying to pump. We have no property that the county owns that we can pump to. If we start a pump, okay, you're gonna have fifty more people who want a pump. Then you're gonna have five hundred people who want a pump. That is not a realistic approach for what we're trying to deal with right now. Water needs to receive. Uh, we took a close look at this during tropical storm Debbie. It's gonna be very rare that a pump is gonna provide any real benefit. One big problem with pumping is that, in fact, you saw it out here on ninety, you've gotta have an incredible amount of hose to get. In most cases, where you have to go to try to get rid of the water. If you've got a property owner somewhere that agrees to take it, and the elevations are conducive to pumping to that location, that's great. Most of the time, that's not the case. And we, we found that to be true when we were dealing with tropical storm Debbie. So, I, I approach that very cautiously.
I know.
And I'll speak to that a little bit, Mr. Hill. I've heard that he's had some folks in the same way. I mean, the biggest thing right now is people, when they have water running on, off somebody else's property, they get frustrated and their fuse gets very short. And they do not like each other. And I feel like it's our responsibility as leaders of this community to try to defuse that situation the best we can. But I mean, I understand that we can't pump their water, but just don't need any more fuel on the fire. Because when somebody's, I was at a person's house this morning, they have water, a river running off of, on other gentleman's land, to their house and the water's coming up all the way around their house. And, um, there's not a whole lot you can say or do for that person at that time, so put your arm around and tell them care. And we all get this together, but there's some short tempers out there right now and I just don't, I want people to know that we're gonna get through it. And it's, the water's gonna go down. And that doesn't mean it's not that people's gonna have expenses. And this county's gonna have more expenses on top of what we've already incurred this year with a number of different disasters. But, uh, at the end of the day, sun's gonna come up tomorrow, we're gonna keep fighting, so. Any other comments on, any value that we should speak from any of the matters today?
I just got a question for city manager, maybe mayor. I know, y'all, y'all got a grant a while back for some, uh, go away wells in the city. Have y'all already started that?
Uh, yes, we have, in fact, just, I guess, Thursday or Friday, we held a pre-bid conference for, uh, for our proposal package. So, uh, I'll give the dates as soon as I know it.
Okay, so y'all are already that far in the process?
Yeah.
No, I was just, in between where, uh, there's a city rightaway that runs up through the rec park back towards, uh, Baker Park. Uh, that gets a lot of runoff from the rec park, from that subdivision everything, I didn't know if y'all had, had a go away well there.
Well, there's some, this, this, this rain, as it usually does, teaches us some performance things. And in this case, we found that there's some, there's some design issues, I mean, this is looking, uh, through that, design issues, and we got it correct. Obviously, we can't address them today or tomorrow, but we have to, uh, take a look at that in the interim, or we'll try to protect those properties as much as we can. But we'll be taking a closer look at that, uh, this year, probably.
Uh, I get, I'm only assuming, but I think the, the board and the rec department would be open to talks as far as if that needed to go on, if he's right there close to it.
They sent us an email, the city's, um, designer, Utah, on Friday, the design to Greg, just to kind of start the talks. And Greg asked him about the wells, but they said that to get any new wells is gonna be nearly impossible. It was just to revamp, I guess, the ones that were existing. So, that's probably not an option, but we're looking at some different retention options over there.
And, and, and a little bit of the slant on, on that to make our grant package, but it's fast, it's, it's fast with DOT. And of course, their focus will be closer to their facilities, of course, as, as you would expect. But we, we will be looking at those design issues, because that, that's really the long-term solution.
Thank you.
Can you, uh, explain what's a go away hole? Where the water goes.
If you drive over deep. Next to the water management district, there used to be a pond. And the pond flooded.
After, after, right.
After tropical storm Debbie.
Yeah.
So, when water management districts, retention pond flooded, and got two foot to their building, they went out there and drove a big casing down on the ground, which is a go away hole. They opened that thing up and it sucks all the water down, so they don't have a flooding problem anymore.
All of it is a six inch oil casing, maybe an eight inch oil casing, they lock it on the ground and.
Without a pump in it?
Without a pump. It's just in a low spot where.
God.
It's, it's amazing what the, what the governments can do and, uh, if, but if they, uh.
Well, I went in there and asked them to give me a permit in a place in the county that we had a flooding problem. And they said, oh, no, we can't do that. I said, I just want what y'all have.
You find you're involved.
And they were all running for the door.
They, they put it down while telling everybody else not to.
That's right.
You what? They put one down while telling everybody else not to.
I, that's what, I just, I thought that that's what it was, but I wasn't sure. That's where it is.
Right, Mr. Harris, about your case.
This just reminded me of something. We have what we call our local mitigation strategy. We have a plan that's written. And we have to have projects in, on a spreadsheet already in place, once HMGP money comes down after an event. Like after Irma, we got some additional funding, we were able to purchase some generators. That's not normally something to begin. But if you have a project and you think this, okay, if we have the money to mitigate it, whether it be roads or anything within the county or city, we need those projects on our LMS, and now's the time to get them on there. Um, some of the roads may not be able to be mitigated, it just is what it is. But if there's anything that you know of that can be mitigated, get with us as soon as possible, because we're working on this and we need those projects on there. Just get up, put that plug in.
The mitigation programs that are on.
Yes. It has to be on there to be.
This might be the opportunity, Mr. Trump, thank you. Uh, this might be the opportunity that, uh, on that little river road that we promised that, uh, that good residents that we would get, uh, the, uh, the low area built up.
We already did it.
Oh, you already did it?
We did it the next day.
Got service.
What, what, I would say, what are you gonna do to get that kind of service as a commissioner? That's my next question.
We have to like it.
I think we should start that earlier, but everybody hasn't gone over it. Sheriff, are you still smiling?
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, dog.
Let me tell you what happened there. When we went out there to do that, the water wasn't up.
Yeah.
There's a big difference. The problem we have right now is the water's up everywhere. It just makes it so. I mean, my, my guys are out working today. They're trying to build some roads back and it's nearly impossible trying to keep the water off of them.
Well, they busted their butt this whole week.
They have, yeah.
I think we got, what we got yesterday kind of undoes everything that.
Yeah, I had guys that were up all night last night, just in trying to keep up with it.
Saying that, I do want everyone to know, I want this board to recognize those guys. They have been, this week, it's a very.
Tough one, but I'm gonna say this, even after Debbie, which it took us, you know, we were a year battling water and the effects of what had happened. You know, those guys might bicker amongst themselves from time to time during normal times, like my brothers and sisters do. But you get a storm and an event, you don't hear a peep out of them, they're, they're all business, they're making it happen. And they really do with it, but I'm proud of them.
Yes, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, so just FYI for the sheriff and for you guys, um, we did close Little River and Royal, pulled the dumpsters and porta potties out, just because the river was coming up so fast, we didn't want to get stuck. But people are still out there swimming in the groundwater in the spring, so they have to go in, but that's just.
Spring was that?
Little River and Royal. Yeah, we went over.
Rivers up there now? Rivers up there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Have you got any reports, Jason, I mean, we talked about it, I don't know if you were in here about the levels of.
Um, I know like at Royal, yesterday, the water was about four foot below the, the little jumping platform there on the top deck, so it's probably come up since then, so, yeah. And then at, uh, at Little River, uh, I think at twenty-four feet, Earl said it was supposed to be at, and we have to pull the dumpsters out at seventeen feet and the, and the porta potties. So, I'm sure it's already up to the top there.
We'll ask the.
Yeah.
You heard from Tans Fourteen?
I have, I have, uh. I've reached out, I had, uh, myself and, uh, to reach out yesterday, and I've not heard back. I'll, I'll call, uh, Commissioner Davis and ask him, uh, can you cheer for that?
Sheriff, can you have your people check those springs a little bit, just around, uh, check on them?
Yeah, I mean, we got people that sometimes we just have to look after folks that get into trouble, not, you know, there's something we can do. Trying their way into trouble, I, I can do it.
Yeah, we, yeah, we'll, plus, we'll keep check on the water level, water level two, you know, just see where we're at, you know. Normally, that's the north and then, then out to south, but if it's, because, you know, we was down there. Yeah. And that driving down Little River, you know, and it was, uh, the river was way below the, the spring, it was all clear and all that, and it just went up quick. Since we was down to that, so, uh, but yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have to keep check on it and, and, um, how people are behaving down there. It, but it sounded like we might just, I mean, have, I mean, you removed the porta potty or something like that, but you, but they're still open to public?
No, we locked the main gate, but they just parked it road and walked in.
Okay, that's, okay, that's what I was gonna say, we need to probably just lock it off, but okay, which, which check on it?
And the boat ramp at Royal is locked too, but if somebody needs to get a vessel off the river or something, we can get it open. We can get a combination to somebody.
Y'all have a lot to share with us. You said that you didn't acknowledge him coming in here off the golf course. Two meetings in a run. I got him twice this week. I got him on Tuesday and Saturday. Uh, we were talking about going ahead and doing a local state of emergency and, I mean, in my opinion, it isn't gonna help us with FEMA without the governor doing the same thing. That's what we really need is for the governor to take action. We can, it's easy for us to take, you know, go ahead and do another local state of emergency, which we could do. Um, and if you want to go ahead and do it, there isn't any harm in going ahead and adopting a local state of emergency at this point. And if the governor does go ahead and do so, that's even better. Can we just draft it and have it ready for Tuesday? I'll, I'll do, in favor of that, you fellows.
Absolutely.
I'll just, I'm saving them, sorry. I mean, at least it's sitting there, if we do get a green light, it's helping the state. We don't have to.
And if we have some, something that no one's expecting, or, you know, between now and then, we, we could meet with that, we know we can meet with that two hours. Kind of get the style. Do it sooner than we need to. We'll have it ready. Okay. Sounds good. Do I have any thing else that, uh?
I don't know if they're doing it good or not, but from the ag side, uh, we could get, uh, Commissioner Nikki to talk to the governor.
I'm sure they'll, every, every phone call he can get.
I know, so. What, what message does he need to get exactly?
We're drowning.
And we're flooded, and we're just needing to take a close look at what's going on over here. I mean, if they, if you can get that.
It's widespread throughout the county, it's my best to put in my hands or my own hand, if I'm just coming in to take a look at.
That would be great, and, uh.
I probably can't get any deals, get your crop sprayed, do what it's left, right, enough air plants around the village, so.
One thing that they will ask is, what is it that you want? Is it monetarily, is it, what type of resource is that? But that's one thing that really asks.
Ones for local government are easier, because if it hits the thresholds, ours is on reimbursement, we prepare all the documentation. With houses, with businesses, they're gonna come in and they're gonna have people working individually with that particular business. Uh, we, we aren't involved in that piece of it. But they send representatives in here to meet with them and go through all the documentation in there. Sounds good. At this time? Sorry? No. At this time, do I have any value that you can probably wish to speak? And we'll move forward, see if, now, closing comments. Mr. Hill, you have anything else? Mr. Harris, can I wrap up with anything? I just want to say, Mr. Hill will be still up. Took it on the channel twice already today. Mr. Richard, other comments?
I just appreciate how hard work the county's doing, because, uh, you know, through this, it's gonna be tough. Lost already on top of a lot of the pressures now.
I just want to say thank you, everyone. On such short notice, showed up, appreciate Mr. Towns coming, I appreciate you coming off the golf course, but in all seriousness, I just want our community to know that we take this serious. That's why we had this meeting, knowing that we hear their, their cries, and there's a lot of people suffering out there, a lot of people living, living at home. Obviously, like you said, some are falling in now, so, um, well.
And that's what I was meaning, I mean, I feel when I was talking about people, and they're ten person, they're getting upset. A lot of times, with a lot of.
A lot of times with a lot of different problems that people have, there might not be anything that you can do, but if they just know you care. If they know you're right there, well, that goes along with us and, uh, a lot of times that's all we can do, and at certain times, we, you know, uh, this water will go down, but it's gonna, it's gonna be a little bit.
I was just gonna, I appreciate the board supporting me, and our colleagues we had last month, closing things together, I appreciate everybody.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Flanagan, any closing comments, sir?
Done here.
All I have, thank everyone for the hard work over the last week, monitoring, getting it hard, it's fast. And, uh, we hit it to the end last night and now we gotta start over, but, uh, we got a good group right before us, just want to let them know we said thank you. Continue prayers to go out there and lay some stress, if we can help, we'll help. We're not gonna lie to you, tell you we can't, or if we can't, so.
I will make some worse on the law.
I know there's some, like, we had some deep phone calls and some heated discussions about not willing to do anything, but there, there's times where our hand is tied, if we can help it, we won't let anybody break the help, we're not gonna break the law, we're not gonna go to jail for you.
I just, uh, I'd like to say thank you to all the county employees and the city employees, those folks have been working hard, uh. I, I appreciate them stepping up also, Sheriff, uh, Law and Police Department, appreciate you fellows, Fire Rescue. Mr. Towns, appreciate you being here today, being involved, helping in any way you can, and what he was referring to when he said Nikki, Nikki Free, Commissioner of Agriculture, just sorry, some people might not have been what he was referring to, but, uh, she'd definitely be an asset to speak up for us and these folks like y'all that have many acres of crops, I mean, she, she needs to understand too, what, what y'all are willing to, so maybe it's gonna help by you reaching out her, for her to know what's going down, farmers is up against.
He's got a large one.
I do, I just appreciate everybody and we're gonna, we're gonna get through this. And we'll get through this and we'll get it all behind us and guess what, we'll have something else we'll have to deal with. That's, that's a part of life and you know what? Just got the glass that always happens, well, you gotta keep looking, right now it's full. We're gonna, we're gonna keep working on it. Mr. Williams, I appreciate y'all in the city.
Yes.
You got anything you'd like to add before we go?
Yes, sir.
Uh, mayor? Mayor, you can step out.
Just, uh, Harris and I were talking, calls, sounds good.
At this time, all needs a motion to adjourn. That motion by Commissioner Richards and the second by Commissioner Campbell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.